By the way, I will take some home.
I'll put you to table.
How's it going?
Yeah.
Bruce asked Shelley to join him in ministry. So Bruce asked Shelley to join him in ministry.
Oh, okay.
Well.
We were to make sure.
I assume that's him. Dan?
I think you're a certain sir right there.
Hold it down. From now on, Dan. Dan? From now on, you gotta follow orders.
Hey, I understand him. Will do.
Robbie here.
Nice to meet you too.
Thanks, sir. There's a lot of ground to cover, so I think we'll be just fine. Okay, nah, I already have a little bit of the list going on.
Okay, really good shape.
Thank you.
We've got a packed house.
Plug in somewhere.
I see this couple just from the back that's got a whole row.
I brought the plug.
Joe.
I think we'll be good.
Did somebody tell Joey they actually had to show up today?
Joe said he's almost here.
He's got three minutes.
Two minutes.
One, who has a nice place with people.
Almost there, yeah.
So we get now.
Bob.
So I'm going proud.
Hey, that's good.
Hey, Bob, unfortunately, I just got a phone jam. He ain't on there. Jim, he's in festivity. He told, he said he's.
The highway.
Get your, get your timing.
And all these other.
I got leaves and I got some, both I got a couple of them.
Five hundred years. That worked out pretty good.
Well, that's a given. That's a yes.
Oh, cool. It's perfect.
Are you gonna stoke him, Harry?
Probably not on his last.
Not on his last heart, alright. I was really hoping you would.
He might leave. Give him a hand. Yay!
He always said that clock is fast.
You're, uh, seating down a little bit? Did you touch?
Yeah.
Y'all please rise. I'd like you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. I'll call this special meeting of the Cape Girardeau City Council to order. It's April 6th, 2018, a moment that many have been looking forward to. And it's a time of, time of celebration and envisioning as we, as we proceed. Roll call, please.
Danny Essner.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Yeah.
Harry Rediger.
Here.
Joseph Azur.
Here.
Need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Gunn, seconded by Guard. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Before we, uh, before we move on to the one order of business, and that's to canvas and get a motion to declare the returns on the election. We, I would like to recognize some former mayors. I don't see Paul Steer. But Paul Steer was our mayor 1978, '81. Don't see Jay Ronald Fisher. 1966, '67. But I see Al Spradling, mayor from 1994 to '02. And First Lady Pam, always be. And Jay Knudsen, 2002 to 2010. And First Lady Cindy, welcome. Thank you for your service. I know for our Spradling, Knudsen, and Rediger, it's been a quarter century. Serving, serving this great city. As we proceed to the, um, oath of office for incoming mayor Bob Fox, he'll be the 52nd mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau dating back to 1843. 52nd mayor. I had listed some former council members who had served during my term. And I saw John Voss came in. John, John, wave your hand. Thank you for your service and your help with me and council during the years we were here. Mark Lanzati, I didn't see. Trent Summers, I didn't see. Meg Davis, Deb Tracy. Of course, Wayne Bowen has since moved to Orlando, Florida. And earlier, a few months ago, we lost Loretta Snyder, who gave so many years of service to her beloved city. So again, welcome to everyone for the, to this session. So we will proceed with the business, and that's to canvas the returns and declare the results of the April 3rd election. And council, you have the declaration in front of you, this sixth day of April, from Kara Clark Summers. If I could have a motion to approve. So moved by Essner.
Second.
Seconded by Fox and Guard. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing no other business come before us, I ask, do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved to adjourn. By Gunn?
Second.
Seconded by Guard. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned. I got a new list here of, to-do list that I just got a few minutes ago. I don't like to be unprepared.
We noticed.
Okay, we got certificates. I got the list. Danny Essner. Just, Danny stepped in with the departure of Wayne Bowen, and it's been a great force on our city council during the months he was present. And served great duty and many honors in the, I want to talk about this later, but in the promotion and the successful vote of PRS too. Danny, thank you so much for your service to our city. I know your service to our city won't stop, but we're here to give you a plaque in appreciation and recognition of your commitment and service to the city of Cape Girardeau. Presented to Danny R. Essner, city council member, August 17th to April 18th. Danny, thanks for your service and congratulations. If I can keep this on an even cue. Joe Azur. Feel like a poster. Please come down. Energetic Joe. As late as today, he was helping and assisting in, in a cleanup as part of Purpose Built Community in South Cape. Joe isn't afraid to get his hands dirty, and he's a leader in that effort. He's leaving council now. He's a young developer in our city. He will be active in our city for years to come. Very energetic. I expect him to continue his efforts in Purpose Build ahead. And he's been a great leader in our council through the years, and been a valuable resource for me. We had several breakfasts and lunches and so forth discussing issues, and Joe, thank you for your service. And with that, the Cape Girardeau, an appreciation and recognition for your years of commitment and service to the city of Cape Girardeau, presented to Joseph Azur, city council members 2014 to 2018. Joe, thanks for your service to our city. You're a great man. Bob. 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 You have to mean after the words. Oh my gosh. We got a lot to do this evening, Harry. I, you'll know in a little bit when I read this proclamation as to what, what Harry committed to the city. It's been a pleasure. And I just, I'm gonna give you this first. Okay. Then we'll get into the other stuff. City of Cape Girardeau, an appreciation and recognition of your years of commitment and service to the governor Harry Rediger, mayor 2010 to 2018. And it's, it's really been fun. They appreciate it, or has. You're gonna be a rough act to follow. You're gonna do great. Well, thank you.
Would you wanna get a, I think they wanted to get a picture with all council members.
Is that right?
Yes.
If I had a hat, that's.
He just studied it.
This is just a picture with you. Just, okay. Everybody wants it on the hat.
You want your flags all over?
No. Or do you want a flag?
Either way, but maybe.
Come toward her. Come, just come forward. There you go. Well, we had four minutes to, to, to curse it. I don't know we did. Charlie, hurry. I'm sorry, not first. Not yet. Harry, see where you at? I could hold that before. I have proclamation to read. This is why I didn't say too much earlier, because this says it all, and there's no way I could say what this says without reading it. The proclamation, whereas Harry E. Rediger has dedicated over 28 years of continuous service to the city of Cape Girardeau, the last eight years serving as mayor, after serving over 20 years on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and whereas Mayor Rediger's unwavering commitment to serve the residents of Cape Girardeau through city government as an active member and leader of various community organizations began shortly after settling in Cape Girardeau 40 years ago. And whereas, a proponent to improve the Cape Girardeau area, he has volunteered innumerable hours and served on various local boards and commissions, including the U.S. Bank Board of Directors, St. Francis Medical Center Board of Directors, Cape West Rotary, Cape Girardeau Chamber of Commerce, Southeast Missouri State University Booster Club, Copper Dome Society and President's Council, Cape Girardeau School Board, American Red Cross, United Way Board of Directors, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, which gained Harry's interest in the city's economic development, and retired from a 38-year career storm manager of J.C. Penney. And whereas, Mayor Rediger was instrumental in moving several projects forward benefiting the entire region, including the Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Greater Cape Girardeau Business Park, the Jury Plaza Hotel and Conference Center, Cape Girardeau Sports Flex, Shawnee Community Center, Cape Splash Aquatic Center, the Isle of Capri Casino, Prospect Big Ball League, SkyWest Jet Air Service to Chicago, and the Marquette Tech District with renovation of the Marquette Tower. And whereas, during the mayor's tenure, the city has received distinguished awards recognizing his hard work and accomplishments, including the Bell Volunteer Service Award, the Rush H. Lindbach Community Service Award, Missouri Hospital Association Excellence in Governments Award, United Way Spirit of Giving Award, the Southeast Missouri State University Distinguished Service Award, the Southeast Missourian Spirit of America Award, Friend of the University Award, and Parks and Recreation Association Public Official Award. And whereas, through Mayor Rediger's continued support and effort, the city has been able to continue and grow and develop due to the approval of the Parks and Recreation Stormwater Sales Tax, Transportation Sales Tax, Fire Sales Tax, Capital Improvement Sales Tax, Downtown CID and TIF Districts, Mid-America Crossings TDD, South Cape TDD, Dogwood CID, and the City Comprehensive Plan, the Downtown Strategic Plan, the Kapahal Park Master Plan, the Annexation Plan, the Landlord Licensing Program, and Chronic Nuisance Ordinance, which began Neighborhood Development and Purpose Built Communities Initiatives. And whereas, while in office, Mayor Rediger witnessed the filming of Gone Girl movie. He was in the movie. He means Modern News Great Race, the 2015 Great American Main Street Award to Old Town Cape, the annual outdoor sculpture exhibition on Broadway, expansion of water storage and distribution system, including transmission, transition from river water to well water, automated leaf pickup, and trash single-stream recycling, the demolition of the Kapahal Pool, and addition of a new family plate structure and shelter at Kapahal Park. And whereas, other major improvements over the past eight years have included the Main Street makeover and Broadway improvements, flood trial repairs and levy certification, independent street roundabout, Riverwalk construction, Veterans Memorial Drive, the Walnut Street Extension, South Spigard Street Bridge replacement, the Fountain Street Roundabout and Sculpture, Fire Stations 1 and 2 renovations and annex to Fire Station 2, new Fire Station 4, new police station and jail court facility, replacement of all five frontline fire apparatus, a new transfer station, new wastewater treatment facility, new LaSalle water tank, and replacement of the Gordonville water tank. And whereas, Mayor Rediger's commitment to the citizenry and passion of improving Cape Girardeau and leaving a better community behind than when he started, to be commended. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Joe Yargardo, Shelley Moore, Victor Gunn, Robbie Guard, Bob Fox, Danny Essner, council members for the city of Cape Girardeau, do hereby recognize and honor Harry E. Rediger for his commitment to public service and upstanding leadership as mayor of Cape Girardeau, and call upon all citizens to recognize him for many years of continued leadership in our community. Harry? Wow. I dare say there'll probably be another proclamation that long the whole time I'm mayor. You know, that was a long proclamation. But I will tell you, there's a lot less eyes there than there are we and us and partnerships. And so thrilled with partnerships we've been able to build through Southeast Missouri State University, the school district, some community corporations, so many through the years that have, that have really made things work. So it's together. It's not individuals. It's together that we get things done. I just am so proud of our greatest partner, and that's the citizens of Cape Girardeau. They make the difference. And during the eight years, and before even, we had yes votes, John, and Tenuan, and council and staff. If we wouldn't have those yes votes, this wouldn't be here. So our citizens are really our greatest partner. But thank you so much. Can I sit down now? No? No? Another one? Another one. I'm not gonna wear an agi as well. Sit down and everything, but we, it's county appreciator thing, and it is we. I appreciate your leadership. This is for me. I appreciate your leadership the last eight years. That Nick Knudsen out there, it's bittersweet that last day, and it will be with you, and you're gonna, you're gonna be in that mode for quite a while from that, because it's your baby. I've been your baby. Everybody's for the last day here. Jay and I know how that feels, and Mayor Spradling too, the same thing. From the county, again, I'm not gonna wear agi as long, but we do wanna recognize you. Whereas, Mayor, Harry Rediger, in considerable distinction as mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau, in honorable and dedicated service.
in honorable and dedicated service from 2010 to 2018. Whereas, his many years of service in the city of Cape Girardeau include numerous worthwhile and lasting accomplishments. Whereas, Mayor Red, Harry Rediger has advocated for significant infrastructure improvements to the city of Cape Girardeau. Whereas, Mayor Harry Rediger also spearheaded several amenity and service improvements for the betterment of future citizens, including constructing the indoor sports place, Ducktown Playground, Cape Splash, implementing automated trash single-stream recycling, and championing the outdoor sculpture exhibition for long-term history. And whereas, Mayor Rediger's outstanding and dedicated service to all citizens of Cape Girardeau County reflects great credit upon himself and the area he has served so many years as a member of Cape West Rotary, St. Francis Medical Center Board of Directors, United Way, and Southeast Missouri State University Booster. And whereas, it is sincere and deep appreciation that we recognize and thank Mayor Rediger for his many years of outstanding and dedicated service to the citizens of Cape Girardeau County, Missouri. We wish him all the best and his future endeavors. Therefore, be it resolved on behalf of the Cape Girardeau County, Cape Girardeau County Commission, presents this resolution to Mayor, Mayor Harry Rediger, on the 6th day of April 20.
Now before, before I sit down, I want to face the, face the council and council and council. And new council coming in. Scott, can you? And staff? Bob? Ben Gray? I want to support him, Ben Gray. Deputy City Manager, Marley Maynor. And to council, the continuing city council, and the new council. We're in good hands. I feel really strong and good about our incoming mayor and incoming council. We've got a lot of things to do, there's, there's to do most. We've done a lot. I inherited a lot, but it's been done part of me. But keep up the good work, and I'll be checking. So thank you, and for all your service.
I think you're supposed to sit here, yet.
You may adjourn.
No. I kind of got this last night.
Your stuff's still here.
Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dan Presson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
All the qualifications.
All the qualifications.
For City Council Member Ward 1.
For City Council Member Ward 1.
As required by the laws of the state of Missouri.
As required by the laws of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of City Council Member Ward 1.
In the office of City Council Member Ward 1.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Shelley Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
All the qualifications.
All the qualifications.
For the City Council Member Ward 2.
For the City Council Member Ward 2.
As required by the laws of the state of Missouri.
As required by the laws of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of City Council Member Ward 2.
In the office of City Council Ward 2.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Stacy Kinder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
All the qualifications.
All the qualifications.
For the City Council Member Ward 6.
For the City Council Member Ward 6.
As required by the state of Missouri.
As required by the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of City Council Member Ward 6.
In the office of City Council Member Ward 6.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Bob Fox.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
All the qualifications.
All the qualifications.
For mayor.
For mayor.
As required by the laws of the state of Missouri.
As required by the laws of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
The city of Cape Girardeau.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of mayor.
In the office of mayor.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
Of the city of Cape Girardeau.
So help me God.
So help me God. Here it is, Bob. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Harry presented me with a gavel. It was given to me by a close friend, made by her father. I don't know where to start. First of all, thanks to the people, the citizens that elected me and passed the bond issue, and we're off to a great start. We've got a lot left to do. Harry gave me a book, a notebook, about this thick. You know, he said, we still got things to do. Well, they're numbered like 1 through 20. And I went through that book already, twice. Already done some of those things, by the way. And I think we're off to a good start. As I sat in the living room the other day, going through that book, trying to organize it, and this and stuff, and my lovely wife had a cleaning lady there at the house, and she comes over and says, you've got to move. You're interrupting her cleaning. You've got to get out of her way. And I had stuff spread everywhere, all over the living room. But I cleaned it up and I got out of the way so she could get on with her duties. You learn after being with someone 50 years, that you do what she says.
Wise man.
A wise man. But I, I really thank my family for being here, all my friends for being here, my fellow optimists. And we're off to a good start. There is a reception honoring Harry immediately following this. Well, that's actually at 5 o'clock at Keller's. You've got a little time to goof off, unless I keep talking for 20 minutes, and I'm not going to. But it really is an honor, and, and I've got big shoes to fill. So I need your help. I'll be consulting former mayors and our immediate mayor, three good friends that will give good advice at times, I'm sure, whether I need it or not. But I think we, we're in a great place in Cape Girardeau. There are still some things that need to be done. And I've got all the priorities. But I agree with those priorities, and I think we're off to a good start. We've got a great council. I can't think of a better way to start. We still have to fill Ward 5, which we will do as quickly as we can, and we'll go from there. So I thank you all for being here, and I sure appreciate the support. I thank you all.